Call to Order of Meeting, the Verona Common Council for Monday, July 11, 2022, at 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to make a motion to declare American States to America, the United Republic of which stands for our nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible and just as strong.
Next, we'll have the roll.
Alder Person Cronin.
Present.
Alder Person Helmke.
Present.
Alder Person Hoekst.
Present.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Kimmitt.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Riki.
Here.
And Alder Person Touche.
I am here.
All right, full house. We will move on to item four, which is public comments. If any members of the public wish to speak, now would be the time to do so. Seeing nobody approaching the mic, we will close public comments and move on to item five, which is approval of the minutes from the June 27, 2022 Common Council meeting. Questions, comments, or motions to approve?
Move approval?
Motion by Alder Riki. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the June 27, 2022 Common Council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The minutes are approved. Next, we'll move on to item six, which is Mayor's Business. I don't have anything under that, so we will move on to item seven, which is announcements. Any announcements from the council? Seeing no hands, we'll move on to item eight, the Administrator's Report. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. Not too much tonight. We have a meeting with the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission this Thursday at 7:00 PM. There's a public hearing for our Urban Service Area Amendment. We also have a partisan primary election on August 9. Details of kind of the voting hours are located in my report, so I've just encouraged you to take a look at those and read those over. And then finally, we have our Board of Review coming up. We have a notice of change assessments. Those will be going out on July 19. We'll have open book, and those dates and times are listed in my report. And then Board of Review will be August 23 at 6:00 PM, and that meeting needs to be a minimum of two hours, or at least two hours will be in this room. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sayer? Alder Riki.
Maybe this is something you wanted us to look at in your notes, but I was wondering if the city council meeting the night before the election has been moved?
Clerk Licked.
I still haven't heard from some people, but I can send out a reminder email.
Thank you for that. Any other questions for Mr. Sayer? All right, we'll move on to item nine, Engineer's Report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. For the County Highway M PB Intersection Expansion Project, temporary signals are in place and operational at the County Highway M PB intersection and will be used until the new signals are installed and operational around mid-July. Traffic is currently in stage three and is planned to last through July 13, which is Wednesday, and then switches to stages four and five. The new traffic patterns will be as follows. All current closures and lane restriction along County Highway M and detours will be removed. The inside lane of northbound and southbound County Highway PB from the eastbound 18151 and County Highway PB ramps to just south of American Way and County Highway PB will be closed. Smaller left turn lanes to County Highway PB will be open. For the 18151 Auxiliary Lane Project, construction continues. Traffic is now using the new Epic Lane Exit location. The work is intended to be completed by the end of August. For the 2022 Asphalt Street Rehab Project, the contractors completed all of their work, and city staff is now completing all of the landscaping. For the 2022 Pavement Surface Treatment Project, all areas have the surface treatment applied. City staff has conducted multiple passes of street sweeping of the loose gravel. There were multiple areas from overspray and/or that were rained on, and some of the sealant has stained the curb and gutter. The contractors continuing to clean these areas. Once curb cleanup is completed, pavement markings will be placed by the contractor at set locations. For Sugar Creek Elementary Public Improvements, paving is complete. Remaining work includes sidewalk placement throughout the project and retaining wall installation along Industrial Drive. Anticipated project completion is the end of July. And finally, for Kettle Creek North Phase Five, we have AECOM has reviewed the initial plan submitted by Denofree O'Kotkin Associates. No definitive schedule has been given for construction, but it is anticipated to be completed in the 2022 construction season. And with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions on the Engineer's Report? Seeing none, we will move on to item 10, which is committee reports. First up, we have 10A Finance Committee. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to make a motion for a payment of the bills in the amount of $1,125,752.57.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Helmke. Alder Kemp.
Sure. First, we have a payment in the amount of $365,457 for a fix for only EMA's for our second half payment of the operating levy. We have a payment in the amount of $48,318 for our well six payment, and then we have a payment of $348,132 for our pre-easy construction payment for the County Highway M and PB construction project. And then finally, we have a payment of $187,195 for wolf paving and excavating for asphalt on our streets.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion passes. Anything further from finance?
Nope, that's all.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we'll move on to 10B, which is Plan Commission. Alder Posey.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 22-1009, approving a zoning map amendment to rezone approximately 21.7 acres to urban residential, 5.08 acres to public institutional, and 2.3 acres to suburban commercial located east of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD with the following conditions: A, the approval shall become effective upon annexation of the property; B, the approval shall become effective upon execution of the development agreement, A, development agreement; and C, for the properties owned urban residential, the property owner shall install and maintain a family, multi-family notification sign.
Motion by Alder Posey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Hoekst. Alder Posey.
Plan Commission held the required public hearing on July 5, 2022, and voted six to zero to recommend the Common Council approve the zoning map amendment per the legal description in the packet with those conditions.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of ordinance number 22-1009, approving a zoning map amendment to rezone approximately 21.7 acres to urban residential, 5.08 acres to public institution, and 2.3 acres to suburban commercial located east of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD with the conditions specified in the packet, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion passes. Alder Posey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number R-22-027, approving a conditional use permit for an apartment condominium complex land use located east of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD with the following conditions: The approval shall become effective upon annexation of the property, and the approval shall become effective upon the execution of a development agreement.
Motion by Alder Posey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kimmitt. Alder Posey.
The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on July 5, 2022, and voted six to zero to recommend the Common Council approve the conditional use permit to allow an apartment condominium complex land use located east of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD with the conditions specified.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? Alder Riki.
How far along is the annexation process?
Mr. Sayer?
So, this is kind of one of the steps in the process. The next step for them is they go to CARPSY next week, or excuse me, on Thursday. I apologize. CARPSY then will take action on the Urban Service Area Amendment in August, and the DNR will hopefully take action on that in September. Kind of once that gets wrapped up, they'll have more certainty of making sure the project can actually happen, because there's other approvals outside of this body that is depended on. At that point, you know, we've worked on with the developer on the annexation agreement already, but we're kind of waiting now for these approvals and also the Urban Service Area Amendment. If kind of all goes to plan, I think most likely the project will start next year.
Other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of resolution number R-22-027, approving a conditional use permit for an apartment slash condominium complex land use located east of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD with the conditions specified in the packet, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion passes. Alder Posey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number R-22-028, approving a conditional use permit for four four-story buildings located east of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD with the following conditions: The approval shall become effective upon annexation of the property; the approval shall become effective upon the execution of a development agreement; and the fourth story shall, will not be located abutting existing residential homes, but will have a step down to the maximum building height of three stories.
Motion by Alder Posey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Hoekst. Alder Posey.
The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on July 5, 2022. Comments from the Plan Commission included why the three-story building is located in the center of the site instead of closer to the single-family residences. The Plan Commission voted six to zero to recommend the Common Council approve the conditional use permit to allow four four-story buildings as depicted on the site plan located east of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD with the conditions specified in the packet.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of resolution number R-22-028, approving a conditional use permit for four-story buildings located, for four four-story buildings located east of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD with the conditions specified in the packet, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion passes. Alder Posey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number R-22-029, approving a preliminary plat located east of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD with the following conditions: The approval shall become effective upon annexation of the property, and the approval shall become effective upon the execution of a development agreement.
Motion by Alder Posey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Helmke, I think. Alder Posey.
The Plan Commission voted six to zero to recommend the Common Council approve the preliminary plat to create eight lots located east of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD with the conditions specified in the packet.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of resolution number R-22-029, approving a preliminary plat located east of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD with the conditions specified in the packet, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion passes. Alder Posey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number R-22-030, approving a condominium plat to create 10 condominium units located at 10 Prairie, 101 Prairie Heights Drive.
Motion by Alder Posey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Alder Posey.
The Plan Commission voted six to zero to recommend the Common Council approve the condominium plat to create 10 condominium units located at 101 Prairie Heights Drive.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? I'll just say what I guess I've said before, Plan Commission, I think at a previous council meeting, I think this is a good project. I think it provides a nice level of kind of gentle density, and it's a way to see that lot get used, so I think it's good. But other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of resolution number R-22-030, approving a condominium plat to create 10 condominium units located at 101 Prairie Heights Drive, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion passes. Anything further from Plan Commission?
Nothing further.
Excellent, thank you. We'll move on to 10C, which is Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Alder Riki.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve a temporary premises description amendment for N+1 Coffee and Beer LLC doing business as N+1 Cafe located at 507 Brew Street for the Midsummer's Night Market on August 6, 2022, from 3:00 to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Motion by Alder Riki. Second by Alder Touche. Alder Riki.
N+1 is requesting a temporary premises description amendment for a one-day summer market. There will be vendors, makers, and food trucks. Alcohol will be served on premise and consumed outdoors within the confines of the barricaded premise. There will be three musicians that play live music. This music is intended to be background music and not a concert.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the temporary premises description amendment for N+1 Coffee and Beer LLC doing business as N+1 Cafe located at 507 Brew Street for the Midsummer's Night Market on August 6, 2022, from 3:00 to 9:00 PM, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion passes. Alder Riki.
I motion approval of a temporary premises description amendment for N+1 Coffee and Beer LLC doing business as N+1 Cafe located at 507 Brew Street for the Kris Kindle Market on Saturday, November 26, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Motion by Alder Riki. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Hoekst. Alder Riki.
N+1 is requesting a temporary premises description amendment for a one-day Christmas market. There will be vendors, makers, and food trucks. Alcohol will be served on premise and consumed outdoors within the confines of the barricaded premise.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of granting a temporary premises description amendment for N+1 Coffee and Beer LLC doing business as N+1 Cafe located at 507 Brew Street for the Kris Kindle Market on November 26, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion passes. Anything further from public safety?
Nothing further.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we'll move on to item 11, New Business. First up, we have 11A, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the Cathedral Point Phase Four Development Agreement. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. City staff and the city attorney have worked with the developer for the woods at Cathedral Point to repair this development agreement. The agreement anticipates that the public improvements that serve this phase will start on August 15 and be completed around November 11. Pending permit approvals, Phase Four will have 28 lots. Staff recommends the Common Council approve the developer's agreement for Phase Four, the woods at Cathedral Point, subject to final review by the city administrator and city attorney.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Motion to approve as stated.
And that would include the review by city admin and city attorney?
Yes.
Motion by Alder Kimmitt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Motion before the body. Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the Cathedral Point Phase Four Development Agreement, contingent upon review by the city administrator and city attorney, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion passes. Next, we'll move on to 11B, which is a discussion and possible action regarding resolution number R-22-031, adopting the City of Verona's, City of Verona Annex to the Dane County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. This is a project we've been working on with Dane County. In November of 2021, the Public Safety and Welfare Committee discussed the city's mitigation strategies that are part of the Dane County Natural Mitigation Plan, and those strategies have been incorporated into the Dane County plan. The proposed resolution authorizes Dane County to submit the plan to the Wisconsin Emergency Management, Federal Emergency Management Agency. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, or motions on this item? Alder Posey.
Make a motion to approve resolution number R-22-031, adopting the City of Verona Annex to the Dane County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan as discussed.
Second.
Motion by Alder Posey. Second by Alder Riki. Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of resolution number R-22-031, adopting the City of Verona's Annex to the Dane County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Next, we'll move on to 11C, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the Director of Planning and Development Employment Agreement. I guess, can we get a brief statement in open session before we go into closed session?
Yes. The staff has completed the background check on a selected individual for the Director of Planning and Development position, and no issues have been identified. An employment agreement has been prepared, and the candidate has indicated they are comfortable with the terms of the draft agreement. The Common Council has the ability to go into closed session to discuss the employment agreement and may return to open session and take action on the agreement.
And the expectation is that we will hopefully have a new position to announce in open session. Any questions or comments in open session for right now? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. Alder Riki.
I make a motion to go into closed session to discuss the Director of Planning and Development Employment Agreement. The Common Council may convene in a closed session for discussion and possible action regarding a Director of Planning and Development Employment Agreement as authorized by Section 19.85 Prin 1 Prin C of the Wisconsin statutes to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee subject to the jurisdiction or authority of the City of Verona. The Common Council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
Motion by Alder Riki. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. This is, of course, a roll call vote, so I would ask the clerk to read the roll.
Alder Person Cronin.
Aye.
Alder Person Helmke.
Aye.
Alder Person Hoekst.
Aye.
Alder Person Kemp.
Aye.
Alder Person Kimmitt. Aye.
Alder Person Posey.
Aye.
Alder Person Riki.
Aye.
Alder Person Touche.
Aye.
All right, we will go into closed session as soon as the doors are closed and we are off of YouTube. YouTube is temporarily.